We need to order, please. Thank you. The December 5th, nineteen, two thousand and nineteen meeting will come to order. Would you read the vote, growp, please?
Vice Mayor Watts.
Here.
Councilwoman Kannable.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilman Evil.
Here.
Councilman Petty.
Here.
Councilman Reese is absent, and City Attorney Moore.
Here.
Thank you. We'll have approval of minutes as everyone had a chance to read the minutes that were sent to you for November 7.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second. All in favor of approving the minutes for November 7?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Consideration of bills over two thousand?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do we need to read what those are?
Pay, just interested, what pays analytical?
You're looking at the minutes.
Oh, I'm looking at the old one. I'm so sorry.
That's okay. It's, one is the attorney and the other one is the fleet bill.
Fleet bill, okay.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Any discussion in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Do we have anyone who wants to speak to citizens' concerns? No? Okay. Mayor's report. I just have a couple things to mention here. Of course, we had a really great Christmas parade this year. We want to thank, once again, the Carthage Lions Club, who does that every year and does a really wonderful job of it. I visited their, our health processing place this afternoon, and they're moving along. They're looking at maybe January or February, but it'll be a while yet before it's open. I believe the Sodas are moving forward to open their place, is what they're saying. Nobles is just about finished and ready to be opened, so we've got another restaurant there. Evol State is still looking at January. I'm not sure yet if they're going to get the technology replaced by then. We also have a possibility of getting a priority loan with TDEC on their state revolving fund for some of the sewer line I here. If we get it, it would be a very good principal forgiveness and interest on that one. And we also have a possibility of getting a loan for that water line down Futral Alley that we've been talking about, and that would be at least twenty percent principal forgiveness, and it would be quite a good interest rate with that one. So that's basically where we are in that. Do we have city attorneys?
I don't have a report, and I have a couple agenda items, but glad to answer any questions.
You want to wait till those come up in the agenda? Okay, all righty. City recorder?
Okay. I've got several things for you guys tonight. One, I want to give you an update on the $250,000 CD that we bid out. It was bid out on December the first. It was awarded to Wilson Banking Trust, and the rate is 1.1% for six months. Another friendly reminder about the utility board training that you guys need to take. I've gotten two of y'all's classes. You've got to have twelve hours worth of training before the end of the year, so we just need to make sure we get that done. If I need to resend any kind of links or anything or instructions, I can do that as well. I think you've got like maybe four hours of a training that you went to a class or something.
I thought I had all mine done. Is mine not all finished up?
Not that I have copies of. I think I just have copies of maybe one certificate that was probably like four hours or something.
Okay, yeah, whatever I need to do, I'll take care of it. Thank you.
Another thing, our auditor, Mr. Cool, he came and then completed all of his work onsite this week. He was here Monday and Tuesday. He will hopefully be attending the January council meeting to kind of fill you guys in on everything that he did. Councilman Petty, you had requested a revenues report specifically on the sales tax revenue, so I've got all that for you. And I did a report. I broke it down by month, so you guys can see where we're coming at each month. I also printed off last year, so you can do a comparison to see how that's going, too. So there's for y'all. So in that, I also included a report from our system of all of our revenues, and then a report of all of our expenses that we've paid out this year as well. No, I do. I didn't know if anybody wanted to look over that, or if you guys want to email me with any kind of questions, that's fine, too. I'll be happy to answer. It's a lot to look at, so.
Can I ask a stupid question?
Go ahead.
It looks like in tax from trustee in July, we got eighty-seven, five oh one, and like we went down to fifty-two, five, and forty-nine, three. Do we have any idea what, why it's that much lower?
So if you look down at the bottom, the point seven five, I don't know if you guys remember when all of that changed. We only received part of it from the trustee's office, and we now receive the point seven five. It's a direct ACH into our bank account from the state.
Oh, so it's combined, okay.
Mm-hmm. So you'll see the checks, the tax from the trustee, and then there's another column of the ACH from the state, and then there's a grand total on the end of how much we're getting each month.
So we're like a grand total.
So it actually increased?
Yes.
Yes, that's it.
I did have a question going back to utility training. What, what would happen if we don't all get that?
I believe I sent that information to you guys.
Yeah, that there could be fines.
There could be. Yeah. But I know you guys completed both of them. It's probably really simple. You just turn the video on.
It's boring, but it's simple.
Yeah.
And free.
And free.
Does it say twelve hours? Is it twelve hours?
It's twelve hours worth of training.
Does it take twelve hours?
Unless you're an overachiever and do thirteen, like Matt did.
He did what now?
He was an overachiever. He did thirteen hours, so he's showing y'all up.
I want to have that buffer.
Some of it's informational, some of it, they took the fraud and abuse, drug it out about, seemed like about five hours, and the two or three people said the same thing, but.
Yeah, and that's probably something we've already had.
Be a little bit fresher, of course.
I'll give you this week on that, because I, last I checked, I thought I was up to date on that, so I guess maybe I, maybe I don't get, can give you a certificate or something.
Yeah, I may just not have a copy of it, just so that I have a copy.
Yeah, if not, I'll, we'll get it knocked out right away. That way we're one hundred percent.
Good deal. Also, we had received a letter from the comptroller's office. I want to preface this with saying, when I got in this position, I had just a few weeks to get a budget together for you guys. So in doing something that quickly, obviously errors can happen. So we did receive a letter. When we send in all of our budget information with our budget ordinance, you have to send in a detailed line item budget as well. So there's a couple of things that it was just kind of figures that were off based on what the ordinance said and what the line item budget said. So I've got a copy of the letter for you guys, just so you can have a copy of it. And I wanted to let you know what those errors were, and everything is fine. I talked with the comptroller's office several times. And basically, they just stated if it looked like we were going to go over budget on anything, we just needed to do a budget amendment. Our budget was approved. Everything was fine. One of the issues, say, our water sewer fund ordinance, it was a simple keying error. It was, it was off by $400. It was a $834,000 budget that was off $400. So it was just a keying error. So as long as we don't go over budget, we don't have to do any kind of amendment. The street aid is on there as well. In years past, we had paid our streetlights to Upper Cumberland. We had paid it out of the street fund. I believe the last couple of years, we've started paying it out of the street department, out of a general fund. So I just didn't note that, and I made it look like we were paying it all out of the street aid fund, but we aren't paying anything out of that. So that's fine. We're not going to go over budget on the street aid fund for that.
So, sorry, just to add, the, the lights are typically paid out of the street aid?
They can be paid out of either. Yeah. I asked the auditor about that as well, and he said, that's fine. You can pay it out of either. But if you want to pay it out of street aid, you can pay for paving the roads, you can pay for your streetlights, anything like that.
Okay, so the street aid is just very targeted.
What it was, was in the past, the street aid fund had gotten lower than the prior recorder liked, and so he started paying it out of the street department, out of that line item, just so we could build up that balance again. And then the sanitation fund, it was another thing, that it was just a keying error on that one, too. So as long as we don't go over budget, as long as we keep track of where we are in our spending, we won't have to do a budget amendment for that one as well. For the letter, mm-hmm. Last, you guys are aware now, I gave you guys my letter of resignation before the meeting. I have been very blessed with my work family here. I've loved working here. I appreciate all the trust that you guys have put in me on this position. It's a very important position. I didn't take it lightly. However, my last day will be December the twentieth, contingent on my work environment. As stated in my letter, should continued treatment or retaliation ensue, I will not fulfill my two-week notice, and I hope you guys understand that. I hope the council will look into this issue. Losing two recorders in eight months should be a problem. And I really hope it's addressed. Please take the time to speak with our supervisors, our employees. This is not just me. I'm not just speaking for myself. I'm speaking for all of us. So again, I truly appreciate your support. So with that being said, you guys will need to vote on posting for a new recorder position.
Thank you. Okay, the next, I don't know if you guys want to do that now or? Let's, let's hold off on that, just for, what do you think?
Because it's not an item on the agenda.
Yeah, it, I, I think the posting for, unless it's a specific motion that the council wants to make, the posting to fill that position can happen automatically. Again, if there's certain issues you want to discuss to make sure certain criteria are included in there, you can discuss and vote on that. But even if that doesn't happen, that will need to be posted and filled.
So is it okay with everyone if we go ahead and post for that?
Do we need to open up a discussion on this, or?
We have to post it, because we have to fill the position.
No, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying that. Obviously, yeah, but. About this? About this.
That's probably a different issue from the posting itself, I would think.
Okay. I do want to address it, like I do want to talk about it. I don't know if we just need to have a special meeting just for that. There's a lot that needs to be unpacked. And that's up to y'all, but I think it's something that, it's not something we're going to, this, this is not something, I don't even think we ought to discuss in a council meeting, just because I think it's going to go long. And I'm all about having just a meeting just for that.
So motion, make a motion, and maybe we can all schedule a meeting to discuss that, that line of?
Yeah.
So you want a special call meeting? Is that what you're asking for?
Yes.
If you want to make a motion, someone make a motion about it.
Is that your motion?
Do you want it to be a workshop or a council meeting? If it's just discussion, it can be a workshop.
We'd want to get.
Or it could be a council meeting.
City employees involved.
Regardless, you'll want it to notice it, and it will, but as far as it being a meeting versus a work session, I mean, again, you'll still want to give public notice and have it open to the public.
I suggest we do a work session first.
That's what I was thinking.
I'm open to it, too.
I don't think it's a, it's just a wording more than anything. It's a work session or council meeting. It's not necessarily we're going to, I don't know that we would vote on anything in particular at that point, but it's something that we just need to.
That's true, because we can allow the city employees to speak at a council meeting, so.
Yeah, yeah, and, and we don't have to necessarily vote, but we can listen. I think that'd be important, listen. I think, I mean, we need to be able to ask questions and, and get truthful answers.
For the retaliation.
This is a rough time to find anything.
No, it's a short.
Which is not something we have to, I mean, it's not anything that we have to discuss in the next two weeks before she leaves, I don't think, unless.
That's a two.
I mean, you could come in after.
Come back.
But we're going to go ahead and post, is that?
But we need to go ahead and post the job opening.
To get application.
I think Jacqueline's the busiest person. Work for you, Jacqueline.
I have nothing before the twenty-first.
Oh. Oh, wow.
That's good, though.
I'm in court every day, multiple trials. Only time I can prepare is at night.
Well, that is the twenty-first.
Saturday.
What about the following, say, Tuesday? Well, that's getting right into Christmas.
Following Tuesdays, Christmas Eve.
Are we having that again?
Christmas Eve meeting?
What about?
Christmas, oh, Christmas.
Can we do it on like the seventh of January? I'm open, I'm open on the seventh. That's far enough out. That's a month, that's a month away, and that's right before council meeting. That would actually, that's the Tuesday right before council. I'm okay with the seventh. That would work really well, because of anything that we need to bring up. Okay. I'm good with the seventh.
Okay, so did we come up with a date for the special call meeting?
Like Barbara and Sam are checking.
I'm good.
You go with the seventh? That's far enough out. That gives us plenty of time to.
I can work you into my schedule.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the issue is, but is this something you want me to be present for? Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
So are we talking about January seventh, is that what you're saying? What do you?
It's a Tuesday. It's the first Tuesday of January.
I think I can do that.
Okay, that's five.
At six P.M.
Let's do five.
I've got to get their calendar, and I can't get it on.
Can you do five?
I can do five.
I can do five. I'll be there. So Matt, you got a motion for five P.M.? Yes, I make a motion that we schedule a special called meeting on January the seventh at five P.M. To discuss issues that have been brought up.
Okay, the motion has been made. Do I have a second?
One second.
The distinction, I think, Matt, you understand, the council understands, is if you do want to take a specific action that needs to be put on the agenda, then, then that does need to be included. If you just want to have a work session for discussion, then, then you can leave it open.
Can we add some kind of broad something or another that will allow us that opportunity, should it arise?
It can, yeah, I mean, it, I don't know how broad you're thinking, but you mean.
Well, I'd like.
You just want to make sure that whatever you put on the agenda covers what you vote on.
Let me play devil's advocate real quick. If we do it on the seventh, we got to have any agenda changes to the meeting minutes on the, by the sixth at noon.
We could put a line item, council's decision regarding work session.
Okay, that would work with them. Okay, so we can go and add that straight to the agenda right now. Okay. Is that?
What time did we say?
Yeah.
Five o'clock.
Again, I, I would, I haven't seen the letter, so I would put to discuss work relate, work environment, or whatever.
I do need to say something, because obviously I didn't know anything about this till tonight. It seems like maybe y'all did, so I, I'm really.
Actually, they got it the same time you did.
Found out just like you did. Just got it.
Yeah, I, I think I would, again, just to say to discuss the work environment as described in Jennifer's letter to the council. And it, it may be that you would need to add something to the agenda at the next regularly scheduled meeting to take action on it, but at least that you would be able to discuss it on the seventh.
So this will be before our next regular meeting? When is the next regular meeting?
The ninth.
So you got a motion and a second?
Okay, any discussion further?
Is there any way that we could make it? I'm not going to say necessarily close door, but.
We can have an executive session in that meeting.
You see what I'm saying? That way we can, that way things can be discussed that aren't made public, I guess. At least, you know, that way people can say the things that they want to say without being, fear of being recorded. Well, I, I think, too, and again, I'm sorry for playing devil's advocate all the time. I think, too, it's, it's, I mean, I, I understand, you know, sometimes, you know, when people want to come forward things, it is intimidating to be public, but also, we kind of sign, we kind of sign up for this thing, and I, and I think if we assure as a council that, I mean, people cannot be fired without, the, the council hires and fires people, and so. But.
We have to consider the work environment on a day-to-day basis, as well as.
Yeah, because we're not.
The internet.
Well, and their personal comfort, feelings of safety.
Yeah.
To go into, I'm sorry, Barbara.
No.
To, to go into executive session, there's going to have to be some pending or threatened litigation that would need to be discussed. So, I mean, it, something could arise that would justify that, but I don't know, we have anything right now to, to say we're going to go into that at this point.
I mean, I see y'all's point on it. I just think it's. Yeah, absolutely.
Speaking for the employees, you're not going to have very many that are going to be willing to speak on camera. I'm just going to be completely honest, because even though it is good to stand up for what you believe in, it's very uncomfortable. People don't enjoy it.
Well, and could, could it affect future positions?
Exactly.
So, can we do that without having pending litigation?
To go into.
Into executive session?
No, but, I mean, there are other things you.
You tell me, how can we do it?
You can get information from, again, there's, there's a question, there's not much in the town's charter with respect to individual council members dealing with individual employees. I know y'all have discussed that issue early this year, even before I came on board, but certainly employees can talk to individual council members, and you can get information from, from employees. And handle that however you would like.
I have to say something, because I'm totally at a loss what's going on here. I, I'm more than, I think I've been more than open for any employees who want to come, and I'm more than open to hearing anything employees have to say, so please.
Well, can, can I ask your opinion, Jennifer, on this? Should, should, should council members come to individual city employees and more or less represent those employees? Would that be more comfortable, having a public meeting hearing in that manner, to where that employee doesn't miss, I mean?
I feel that you would have people be more open to, to telling you issues. I know that I have spoken with some of you personally, myself, about some issues in the past. You guys have been great to listen to me. But as far as the other employees, I think they would come more near talking to you if it was one-on-one instead of with a camera in a public fashion.
Yeah, because it's just, it's hard to get things moving forward if, if you can't quote somebody.
And I understand that.
And I get, and also get, I understand that it's, it is intimidating. I promise you, I understand that. But if we're going to have change happen, we have to, we have to, and so, yes, it is, it is a risk.
And that could come at a later time.
Yeah, and I just, I, I understand. I just want to be as transparent with the public as possible. Again, I, 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 I get it.
Any action the public will know about. If there's, if there hap, if anything happens, the public will know about that action.
So I would just, I would defer to what the, the attorney's recommendation is, so we don't get trouble.
My, my suggestion would be just go ahead and schedule the work session. Again, if something, information arises between now and then that could justify a call for an executive session, then we can do that. And, you know, you can talk to individual employees. What, what you really can't do is talk to individual employees about the way they do their jobs and are interfering supervised, but you can get information from them if that's what you feel like you need to do.
What's off limits, again?
You, you shouldn't get involved in like supervising their job and instructing them on what they should be doing on a day-to-day basis, or interfering with their work.
One last thing I'd like to add, I think to make this easier as far as employees coming to you, if you would allow them to come to you, instead of you going to them and be like, hey, tell them everything you know. I think, again, you'd have more people willing to talk to you. If, if you open it up, say, hey, employees, if there's any issues you'd like to talk about, please come to us. It is the time to do it. I think that'd be a better way to do it.
I do want to remind her, just because it, you know, it may come up in the context communications, that any, any communications that you have, email, text, whatever, are public records. And so make, you know, you want to make sure everybody understands that, that anything they communicate that way will be on the record.
Right.
So does this go, this letter of resignation go on the public record?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so we schedule the work session, and then if something comes up in between, we good with that, or we all, we all good with that? Seventh at five, right?
Yes. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, we have a second. We just got to vote here. We're just discussing, yeah.
So the motion is to have a work session on the seventh, and there's been a second. Need further discussion?
What are we going to call it? A work session or a council meeting? Special called council meeting?
I'd just call it a special called council meeting.
Okay, special called council meeting on the seventh, five P.M.
And then we need to have something about being able to make a motion on. Voting on action or recommendation. Would we want to put that, put that action, like, go ahead and put that action on an agenda item for the following council meeting on Thursday? Well, we need to put it in this agenda, too, because we can't, if we wanted to take some kind of action at that point, then we couldn't.
Yeah, I think if you've taken a motion, if you've called special called meeting to consider, again, the work environment that's been described in Jennifer's resignation letter, I think that would cover what you would.
Whatever motion we would want to take, okay, action.
And if not, you could do it on Thursday at the public.
Okay, so you're amending, you're putting amendment in there to make sure that there's an action called on the motion, so, and I'll second your amendment.
Just so I understand, so we've got a special call meeting, and you want to add an amendment to the motion that, what, an action can be taken?
I think, again, that, that the topic of the meeting is to discuss the work environment and allow the council to take an action on that if appropriate. Wordier than it needs to be, but I'll put, I think the council will probably say better.
May I ask the question legally, so I know the employees can come and talk to the council people? Can the council people talk with each other on something they're going to vote on without it being a violation of sunshine law?
Not outside of the meeting, I would.
I just want to be clear about that. All right, we have a motion as second. Any other?
We have an amendment.
There's a, yeah, there's amendment. So we vote on the amendment first, and then we vote on the motion with the amendment.
Would you restate your minute, please?
That we, that we include the option to be able to take, to vote on action. Is that right? On whatever we decide, whatever we.
I thought it was to add it to the council meeting, the regular council meeting agenda.
That would be, that would be a sec, that, that'll happen as well. That'll happen as well. This is, this is so that can, action can be taken at the meeting. And then, yeah.
So would you restate your, your minute, please?
To, to have the, or to include the. To include the option to take action.
Upon the results.
Upon the results.
To include the option to take action on the results? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, if we decide that we need to take some action, then we can. Whatever that may be.
On the results of the.
Of whatever we find, whatever we, we decide.
Results of the discussion, is that what we're saying, on the results of?
I think, yeah.
Okay, so we have an amendment to include the option to take action on the results of the discussion. Any second on that, please.
I have a second on that.
Okay. Any discussion further on that?
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Okay, then we go back to the regular motion to set a special call meeting, Jan, January seventh at five P.M. To discuss the work environment described by Jennifer in her letter, and to, the amendment is to include the option to take action on the results of the discussion. Now, do we have a second on that amended motion?
I'll second.
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
So that passes, okay. All righty, moving on, we have Chief Davis. Chief, report, please.
Just two things real quick, guys, or actually, three things. First thing is sergeant position. I'll get to that when I get to the new business. Other thing is, talked to Vice Mayor last time, and the mayor. Other thing is, talked to Vice Mayor last time, and the mayor, I think, just be about the recording system for the radio, for the telephone system. Money's in, money's in the budget, roughly around fifty nine hundred dollars. Just gonna make sure y'all are okay with that, money was in the budget, it was budgeted for and all that. Out of now for about a year and a half, so we need to go ahead and get that and get it, it'll cover the city, more of a liability thing. Also helps us with evidence in court, protects the officers and dispatchers when we're on the phone and on the radio and all that stuff, so. So make sure y'all are on board with it, I'm gonna go ahead and move forward with it. And then, one more positive thing, we had an officer today that won an award, uh, Hilo Teasley. We were part of the Tennessee Highway Safety Office, uh, grant program, and, uh. I had submitted his information for him to be an award for a beyond the stop award, and he won that, so we went up today and had a nice little. Uh, lunch and everything up there and cooked bill, and he got his award, and it was a really good thing, so I'm gonna mention that as well, guys, so.
Awesome.
I'll jump a little bit.
All right, thank you. Public Works, Les is sick tonight, Derek, Derek, do you have anything you wanna add?
I don't have anything to report, if you have any questions, I'll be delighted.
Okay, thank you, um, water plant, Mr. Teresa?
I don't have anything to report, I have something on the agenda later.
Okay, waste water plant, Mr. Teresa?
I'm just gonna let y'all know that we have a new power grid coming into the plant now, thanks to upper Conlin. Uh, something that's been needing done for several years. And our our backup power actually came from South Carthage, so. It took them several months of planning to get everything done, but they they redid, redid everything on the pole, all of, uh. Everything's new, and then that gave us a chance at the plant, when they pu- uh, powered that up, we got to go to our backup power system. And everything worked good, so while we were on it, the main power line coming in, I replaced every transformer on it. So it come out a real good thing for the town of Carthage, uh, they did great work, they worked with us real good on it. And now we have brand new power coming in on the backup and the main power coming into the plant, so it's a really good thing, and. Uh, other than that, that's all we got.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Chief Hyatt?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, anything there?
Y'all have my regular monthly report, but I also need to advance you that the G two M, engine one fails pump test this year, it's a required annual test. Uh, it shouldn't be pumping at least twelve hundred and fifty gallons a minute. Always pump thirteen hundred plus, this year we didn't make six hundred, so it has filthy shop, I have no clue what it cost, which it is. Hoping it's transfer valve, if it is. And if they can find a part for nineteen eighty two fire pump, hopefully it won't be terribly expensive. But if they have to machine one, still be checking the new fire code. This may make y'all aware that I'm gonna have to change money.
Let us know.
Okay, okay. All righty, uh, grant reports, the. The, uh, grant writers weren't able to be here, but they sent something along, uh, Virginia. Has an update on the facade, um. I can read it, or can make a copy for y'all, but basically. Three twenty three Main Street, which is Mr. E Bear's, and the facade works completed, the doorwork is under construction, the project's moving on smoothly, is what she says. Excuse me. Three oh two Main Street, Wilkerson Project contracts have been signed for, uh, Gene Reed painting to complete this project, work will begin as soon as permit, weather permits. Three twenty six Main Street, the Holloman Project bids have been received for the side work on the building, we're waiting for. Mrs. Holloman to review the bids before moving forward with a recommendation for award. Two one two Main Street, Beller Project bid opening was held for the facade work on November twenty fifth with one bid received. We are waiting on some paperwork from the contractor for recommending for award. Three one six Main Street, the Adair Project plans and specs for the facade work were given to multiple contractors and are due on December sixth. Three one four Main Street, Help Center, Mr. Geo was recommended to do the job, work on the job, we are hoping to sign contracts in the next few weeks. Then awnings on one oh four, two one two, two one six, three one oh, three one two, three one six, three one eight, and three twenty six. The design committee met to discuss awning colors, colors were approved and the awning packets were sent out to multiple components, bids are due December sixth. So that's been taken care of, uh, these projects are moving along very quickly now, so I I think by next. Sometime in the next few months, I think we'll have a lot of these completed. Then for the water tank project, this is what, uh, was sent.
Sorry, I just, we question on that, awnings project, is that the one where they're taking, uh, it's the old metal ones? Old metal awnings, and they're replacing those, is that what that is?
These numbers, you mean?
Yeah, yeah.
They're still, uh, they're still sort of in limbo about the Help Center and and Mrs. Adair, Mrs. Adair wants to take down the metal. And put a cloth, a new awning there, basically.
Okay, and we're, it's approved, they're just waiting on the bids?
That's what she, again, I'm reading her report.
I just write in real fast, thank you.
Okay, uh, on the water tank project, um. We'll get more into that, but, um, right now, the the plans are kind of in limbo until we can get them submitted to T D A. But I I talked to U C D D, our grant writer, earlier today, and he's trying to see if there might be a way to. Sort of bypass some of that, so we can move this forward and get the water tank moved, because the water department does need that done as quickly as possible, so we're. Trying to work on expediting that if possible.
We're waiting on T D A on that?
Well, no, Mr. Warren, and we 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 can get more information about that in just a minute, but.
Still waiting on that situation, okay.
He's holding on to them, uh, then the walking track, um. We have the. Contract from T D A, later we'll talk about that, and then once we get that signed, we can move forward then signing of the other contracts and move that one forward pretty soon. So that's, that's their report and this right here, that they sent me from U C D D.
I'm I'm so sorry to slow you down, I'm not trying to slow anybody down, the walking track's the same situation as the water tank?
Well, no, no, that that's, we've got the contract from T D A with that tonight.
T D A's good to go, walking track project.
Tonight, he will have it and we will approve that, so then we can go ahead. It requires your approval before it can be signed, and then once that's signed, we'll get the contracts for the grant writer and the engineer signed, and move forward with that.
And then the Blue Kraus playground equipment?
Uh, we we won't know until January.
Unknown till January, okay.
Yeah, who was, and again, it's an award system, so whoever they award that to.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, okay, um. Okay, so we're now going into unfinished business. So the Stevens Building, um. I wanna introduce Mr. Evan White, like, he was, he was actually the engineer who's been selected to do the walking track. He was kind enough to go up to the Stevens Building, kinda look around, eyeballing, he's got just a guesstimate of what we might be talking about to. Put the restrooms, ADA restrooms in there.
Uh, yes, I looked at it and, um, I'm getting bids sight unseen, so the contractor, everybody's busy, and. They kinda come up right before the council meeting, so I didn't have time to actually try to get somebody to hand here to look at it. And I've had two contractors, I told them what we was looking at, they're needing three female, um, restrooms and two, uh. It's one restroom, but, uh, three commodes, one ADA compliant, uh, two men's, one ADA compliant, one not. That's doing two separate, uh, restrooms up there, on to that, uh, the old building. Uh, you gotta take in account that, um, it's an old building, you're trying to tie into extremely old, uh, stuff and extend and have to deal with, so. Uh, the prices they're giving me is anywhere from fifty to seventy thousand dollars. This is commercial prices, uh, that's gonna be a commercial contractor, so. A residential type in, uh, guy, if y'all are good with them, you might be able to get a little bit better. On just that kinda contractor to to look at trying to do some of this work. It's, uh, it's quite a bit of money, and I told her I'd rather, um, find. Uh, some contractors and get some prices to let y'all know before you get in the middle of it, and then you find out once it bids that it's gonna be this high. I'd rather be upfront with you instead of coming in and y'all getting surprised.
Is it concrete, or is it, uh, is there subfloor?
Uh, it's subfloor, it's just old tongue and groove, uh, flooring. Uh, the problem is, you're trying to, you gotta gravity feed that sewer and hit what's already there, so elevation could be an issue, but. Uh, also these commodes, when you get into commercial type commodes and ADA grab bars and, uh. All that compliance, the cost goes up, I mean, it's, you have to be paid for, it's, it's, it's not a hundred and forty dollar commode at Lowe's no more, it's, you're getting into.
Seems like the grab bars and all, wouldn't we be required to use commercial grade?
Yes, they're stainless steel, I mean, that's what I'm saying, they're, I mean, a, uh, an eighteen inch grab bar's like three hundred bucks. So, and you gotta have a thirty six inch and a forty two and eighteen, so. You know, you look at a commo stall, you've got a thousand dollars in grab bars. So, I mean, everything adds up real quick.
You got relationships, they add up.
So that's where I'm saying, and I'm giving you a twenty thousand dollar range there too, so that's, that's sight unseen, um.
Fifty's a lot.
Yes, it's, it's, it's a lot to to do that, and I could get them down here and actually, uh, they could actually see what they're trying to get in the middle of. And probably get a little bit better idea, but still, you're gonna have to, uh, have it designed and bid out, uh, to get the real figures, but. That's an estimate.
I think we're most likely gonna have to try to find a grant for that too.
Right.
We've contacted U C D D, and he says right now it's hard to get ADA grants, but they're looking for a possibility for that. But, by the way, this is, this is Mr. White's company, and from Lafayette, and a very highly respected company that's done a lot of work. This whole area in Smith County especially. Okay, thank you, the, um.
I got one thing about that, um. We've dumped a lot of money into there, or going to dump a lot of money into that. And aren't gonna really get any kind of return on it, and we're gonna have to rent that thing out. You could rent it out every day and never pay that back.
And really, you don't know what, sorry, go ahead.
No, I I, yeah, and I mean. Could we not, like, give it to the spot and just expand that out, like, does that, does that go with any, like? We're never gonna get the money back out of it, I mean, I'd rather give the building away before I spent, to the museum, before I spent seventy thousand dollars trying to put.
I I don't think.
Five bathrooms in it.
I don't see if we're gonna actually spend our own money, if we can't get a grant, we're gonna.
Well, we always wait on grants, we never get a grant, I mean, I'm just, like. Would that not be a?
Four years down the road.
I mean, I would rather say Barbara, you know, use it for the spot, y'all take the space, use it.
Well, I think the museum might.
Talking about passing out. Maybe, you know, figuring out what to do, possibly with the museum, cuz museums are five oh one C three, right?
So is the spot.
Spot's five oh two.
And we are overrun, in fact, I'd like to bring a presentation sometime and show you what the spot does, because, um. We have way more people in there than we probably should have in there.
I mean, it takes us. Takes a liability off the city, possibly, then you're also though, too, with that, you're looking at a property, you're looking at the parking property, which is a very. The parking part of that is the, really honestly, the value for the city.
Right.
Um, cuz everybody parks there, but, um, as far as the building goes, I mean, yeah, I agree, I agree, it's.
I mean, can we, can we not? Extend her lease, her. Square footage out into that, into that performance space, and like.
Thing is, if, I'm I'm kinda with you, if we're gonna, if we're gonna put this money into it.
That's putting no money into it, is what you're saying, we would put any money.
Like, if they, they pass that on to them, they take, they take the property.
Well, are we still on the building, but let them at least have, we just redo the lease?
I think, just to back up, the original. The original concept when the the museum took over was that they put quite a bit of money in that performance hall. We've already, and we haven't gotten the bill yet, but we are gonna get a bill for about five or six thousand dollars for the lighting that was been put in there, cuz it. To make it into a performance hall, so I think the museum has, needs to be part of this project, cuz they've already invested quite a bit of money.
But they did all that when it wasn't their square footage to be doing stuff in, they took it, when they did that. That was not any of their square footage or property, they did it and then expected the city to give it to them.
Well, and you had already said that too, you s- you've said to me what Matt just said.
I think they might need to be part of this discussion. Because they've spent quite a bit of money in years in that museum, I'm just saying, there may be a way to work, so everybody can have some use of it, but not just to exclude.
And I don't mind getting everybody involved in the discussion, I'm kind of though, I I kinda somewhat agree with you on that, it's just. I I don't know why, I mean, if the city can get, I mean, honestly, I'd rather, I'd rather see the city get rid of the property, in that way, it's not a liability for us anymore, we don't deal, we don't wanna. Pay it for nothing, and we go to town, the the part of the property I wouldn't before is obviously that parking area, you know.
Well, we use storage underneath to be the only other part.
Okay.
But. I mean, half the, you know, Barbara needs space, you know, give the spot the extra space. Cuz I don't, guess you need bathrooms, I mean, you've got bathrooms already that you can go to it.
We built bathrooms.
And you just really need it just to put the kids to, you know, to do stuff.
It would really be.
So if any other group wanted to use that, how would we?
We're not going to, it's gonna be theirs.
I'm talking about the library, I mean, the, excuse me, museum. If they wanted to use it for some of their functions, which is originally what they were, they talked about.
Have a lease between the spot and the museum?
They would have to ask the spot to use it.
We work together well, though.
Yeah.
And we could always partition the parking lot.
Do you think it might not be fair to have the museum included in this, cuz they've been a big part of our community?
I'm not making any decision right now.
Decision right now, I think if we make a decision, we get them involved, obviously, yeah. Um, but, yeah, I mean, I'm I'm for, you know, we wanna put.
I'm just saying, I, the museum spent the money. Without the permission, and that's not my fault, that's nobody's fault except theirs. That would be like.
Well, I'm not just talking about that, I, they've spent close to ninety thousand dollars on the museum as a, as a. Vehicle for people to come from all over the place to come and see the mu- the history of our company.
I'm not concerned about the exhibit space, the museum, I'm talking about. That big open money pit that we've got, that we keep throwing money into it, called the performance hall.
The only thing we've thrown into that is is the lights for that five thousand dollars.
It's fine, but we're talking about spending seventy thousand dollars on bathrooms.
I'm not, I'm not gonna spend seventy five, I, no, there's no way.
I think it's worth putting, uh, on an agenda, item next, next month.
And make sure this museum's invited to it.
Absolutely, yeah, we get them invited, and we we talk about it, cuz I mean, we take liabilities off the city. Give it to more private organizations, I'm all for it, yeah, absolutely.
I've seen that be really successful in other small towns as well, and it could be that, that we could get donors to. Pay the city back the five thousand for the electricity that was put in there. I think we could do that.
Okay, um, any, let's move on then, thank you, um. Okay, the next item is Mr. Warren's invoices, grit chamber, et cetera.
So, um, and I'm sorry, but did Mayor, do you want me to go ahead and discuss the water tank as part of this as well, was that included in the invoices in grit chamber? With that the intent to to discuss the water tank invoices as well, okay, cuz I know we had the other issue with the invoices. So breaking these up, um, the the first one with respect to the water tank project, um, Mr. Warren did recover. The mayor signed and Mr. Warren took back the plans, um, for the water tank. Uh, and has made a proposal that he will go ahead and file those with, uh, T D A to get the project moving forward. As we've discussed before, the new engineering firm is then agreeing to assume supervision of construction responsibility for the project moving forward. Uh, but Mr. Warren has requested, uh, that we enter into a settlement agreement and release, which I've reviewed and I'm comfortable with the release language. Um, but is also asking for forty six hundred dollars, um, to, um, to pay for the completion of the plans and the filing. The original contract that the town signed with him was for twenty eight thousand dollars essentially for. This part of the project, and I think, and Jennifer, correct me if you know, but I think we've, the town has paid him. A little over twenty thousand dollars currently, so this would put it at about just under twenty five thousand dollars. Which, again, not to the dollar or even the hundred or thousand dollar, but is, looks consistent with what was in the original contract. Uh, and then, of course, the new engineer will be responsible for the supervision costs, um, moving forward, but, so that's the proposal. That's before you, um, to to keep it moving. And release Mr. Warren from liability on this project, only, just the water tank project. So if you wanna take action on that, then I can discuss the other issues, or I can go ahead and discuss the other issues as well.
Could you repeat that, I'm sorry, but what, his actual, is that, you're saying our counter or his counter?
That's, that's his proposal, his counter, his offer with respect to the water tank project.
Only the water tank, leases them mildly on the water tank.
That in any way, or?
We did, and he he did not accept the counter and just asked that this be presented and submitted.
And this how much again?
Forty six hundred dollars.
So essentially, we're paying him a full amount that he had projected. Be it or whatever.
It doesn't match up exactly to the way the, the, it was, but it's a little bit less than what I think previously.
Three and a half K, yeah.
Yeah.
Again, the, the engineers who've taken a look at what he put together have said that. We've more than paid him for what he's done already, so.
But if we don't pay him the, the rest, we get nothing out of it, do we?
Well, that's, that's what UCDD, uh, they're trying to see if there's not a way. To move this forward, in, in spite of this.
Yeah, and, and I don't have any information about that, that's just what's been suggested, and, and I don't, um. And, and I, I know we discussed this last time in executive session, I, I'm glad to do that if you think it's necessary, but I did wanna just. Relay that out in case you wanted to take action on there. I'm not advocating for approving it necessarily, but. You know, I'm, the contracts that have been approved by the council before, um, I guess last September. I, I can say that the amount that he's requesting is consistent with what was originally approved.
I, I recommend we discuss this during executive session, that way we can put everything on table, see what's, who we get to work with.
We have to go in executive session for anything else?
Um, we can discuss the other, the same items that we did with respect, that's pretty brief, but glad to do that, we, and we can do that at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so, if you wanna wait till the end, just to make a motion.
Do make a motion, go in executive session on this issue at the end of the meeting.
Some motion in executive session at the end of the meeting.
We have a motion.
Second one.
Motion second, and further discussion on that. Okay, all in favor of going executive session at the end of the meeting to discuss this? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, um, moving on to the historic sign.
Mr. Whit. Uh, I did finally speak with Mr. Whit again today. He apologized for, he, he recollected our conversation, saying that he would submit this as a claim to his insurance, he just said he had not had the opportunity to do it. That he had to pull together all the details to submit it, he said he would do that, um. Well, on a conversation, he said he'd either do it tomorrow or the first next week, that he followed up with an email that said, confirmed he would do it early next week. Um, I, I will say that, that tone of the conversation and, and his email is that, you know, he's still denying responsibility for it. But he's willing to go through the process of, of submitting it for a claim, and, and they presumably will investigate it and talk to town officials, and maybe we'll have some resolution. So, my recommendation would be just to, again, wait until January before taking any other action.
Do, do we need to discuss this at all, or just wait till?
Part of that is, he, he has submitted continually invoices for the repair work that was done. Um, almost immediately prior to when the sign fell, and is demanding payment, and how much?
Well, I, I, I mean, not so much the payment, I'm, I'm just pointing out that they came down in, in writing, they changed out all of the, um. The eye bolts. Said that one of them was broken, they replaced that, they replaced three different ones, and it was just within a short amount of time that this thing fell and crashed. So. From all appearances, it would appear that whatever they did to repair it, didn't do a very good job, and in fact, it did, it did crash, and. That's a three thousand dollar sign that was, I guess, paid for by funds. Between the leadership and the city sometime back. Just another thing to throw in there, so.
Just give them another month and look, see what they do, if they got, buy insurance for it, let their insurance cover it.
Okay. Right, um. Then the fire hall bay, uh, there's two parts to this, I, again, Mr. White came down earlier and, um, kind of took a look, we had, if you remember. I guess there was, back in two thousand seventeen. This group next door, premier, Tennessee premier construction, who does steel buildings, had, uh, given a, an estimate, and back then, it was forty-four thousand dollars. And now it's gone up to, as of. A few months ago, seventy-five thousand, and probably it will be even more now, so. Mr. White looked at that area with me, could you tell him a little bit of what you're thinking?
Well, did you, did you get Joe in with you on this one, like I asked?
Yes, we, Joe and I have been talking, but.
But did you?
Well, let, let, let us finish, please, and then I'll tell you what, what possibility is here, yes, okay.
Uh, I just reviewed the letter this, like, right before the council made, uh, I went down and looked, um. One of the reasons, I'm gonna say one of the reasons that the, the prices went up, uh, Trump put tariffs on steel, and that was in seventeen. Um, that's gonna be a lot of your reason the steels went up, because now they're, uh, competing with China, of course, and, uh, steel has went, uh. I ain't got a percentage, but it's, it's significantly, and I think in that letter, he also said they're expecting another five percent. So, uh, that's probably your difference, but the only thing I noticed in the letter, um. From my, uh, cursory view of it is that there's probably no foundation, uh, that's included in that, it looks like it's just the building package and then stopped putting it up. But I don't think there's any, um, the floor or the foundations to hold down the pre-engineer metal building. It could be, uh, but from my review of the letter, it looks like it's not part of the.
So we need a, we need to definitely include the foundation on it.
Well, you just need to make sure, I mean, I would clarify that with them, uh, because it looks like it's just the building itself. Uh, it didn't look like there's any electrical in case y'all wanna hang lights in the bays or, or things like that, it looks like it's. Um, they call it pre-engineer metal building packages, and usually it's just the package itself, it's the. It's the steel framing, the insulation, and the steel panels that go on the outside and the doors.
No heat, no air, no electrical?
Correct.
No foundation, water.
This, this is just one group next door, it would have to be bid out, but the good news is, I talked to UCDD, and I've told Mr. The Chief about this. We can apply for a CDBG grant, uh, we can apply, as has been mentioned before, by February. And he looked up. Depends on where you live, your economy, whatever, whatever the match would be, if we were to get this grant, we would have a sixteen percent match, which is really, really low, it would be great. Uh, so depending on what we find out, and I've shared this with the chief, when we find out about what the building would be, we might could get a grant that would not only cover the building. But some other things that he needs there, so. UCDD wants us, if we want to do this, to move forward, and it requires a public hearing, resolution of intent, and procurement, of course, an engineer to do that. Um. This particular grant, if we could get it, it goes up to four hundred thousand dollars maximum. So that would cover a building, it could cover any number of things that, uh, Mr. Mr. Chief has given us kind of a list of things that. Might be helpful for the fire station, so. Um, yes, sir.
Can I ask the chief something? Uh, in your opinion, do you believe we need heating and cooling, or at least heating in there?
Have to have heating and keep tanks bunked, we have two heaters down there now. Probably would not have to add one, the bays are not air-conditioned, they. We sweat in the summer, we just don't want them to freeze in the winter.
Understandably, okay.
Well, what I wanted, which obviously didn't get done, was I wanted you two, cause I asked, remember, I asked for. Chief and Sarah Marine to talk to each other about how many bays we needed, if you wanted three full-size bays or two.
We've talked about.
Full-size bays and, uh, whatever, and I wanted it. In writing, cause that's what I asked for.
Okay, that's what this is.
No, that's. Did y'all talk much about it over the past month?
I turned in our names.
Okay.
It was a list including.
Yeah.
Two bays preferably. If we got rid of two pieces of apparatus combined, we might get by with one, two would be better.
But should we just put three on there? If we're building two, wouldn't it just be better to add one more?
We built three, thinking that would last us for twenty-five years, and that's about as long as it lasted, actually, a little less than that. Two more are needed right now.
Joe or Chief, or is there room for, I think there's only room for two down there, aren't there?
I don't know, like, that's, that's true.
We wanted, I, I think what, we wanted to look in to see if there was room for three and.
Well, that's what we looked at today, I don't believe, you measure, I, I, it'd be awfully skinny.
I didn't know where the property line was, if it's where the asphalt is, you're pretty close with probably two bays.
Is it, it just goes to the asphalt, doesn't it?
You're gonna have setbacks too, of course, um, y'all, y'all are your own planning department, so you can track your background.
Oh, what about, well, what about, cause we're looking at extending on the one side, extend on the other side too, possibly. If we need a third.
The, the far end would be much cheaper to them.
Okay.
Than it would be to handle this side.
Yes, cause right now he's got two bays, and they could continue on with the bays, I guess you got an office, I, I didn't want to say on, on, on the right side, so you're talking about a. Separational occupancy, so they're gonna do some.
Gotcha.
Different.
So, two bays probably, but then.
I mean, if you can get three bays in there, then.
Well, I think you're being proactive, cause. I want a number, because we talked about. A grant or not, come next budget, we're building fire hall base.
Yeah.
I, we've got to have them.
Chief, didn't you say two would be sufficient, and especially if we could combine two of those engines to a better one?
Well, it's gonna take money to combine two of those.
Okay.
Uh, right now, we need two bays.
Right.
I mean, we need.
Okay.
We're, we're at a safety issue right now.
Equipment.
Right, so.
Plus straight.
Okay.
I mean, we can't.
Well.
You can't build anything unless, you, you can't even ask for the grant you want without a number, you can't say, oh, well, I think it's gonna cost. Two hundred thousand dollars, so that's what I want, like, I mean, we need a, an RFQ, we do RFQs for everything else, so why can't we do one for a fire hall bay?
This is a guesstimate here, that's already been given to us, seventy-five thousand, and then we put the, the concrete pad on to it, it's gonna be over a hundred thousand.
But he's saying that it doesn't have the concrete, doesn't have electric, electrical, and, and to be honest with you, you didn't wanna check your, you know, tons per unit or whatever, but that, that. Heat, you need wanna check the heat on it too, because that's, that's the whole reason we're doing it.
I just want a dollar figure.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't care what the doll, I truly don't care what the dollar figure is, I'd want to know how much it's gonna cost.
So can we, can we get plans for, if we need foundation, plans that we have there?
Okay.
Plans for electrical, uh, I'm asking you right now, plans for.
I would suggest, and do you want to bring an engineer on board to do that, cause we'll have to have an engineer.
We have to have an engineer to do it.
Yeah, we have to.
So it's gonna be over ten thousand dollars.
They're gonna pay, if, even if we get the grant.
Yeah, e- either or, we're gonna have to have it, yeah, get the electrical in there, get the heating in there.
Right.
And make sure it's up to par.
The usual procedure is to send an RFQ out, or an engineer. I'm assuming we have to do that, or, or can we go with?
Are we already, do we already have an agreement with this firm?
Well, we do for the walking.
Okay, then, yeah, then, then actually, you can do another, if you mean.
Would you be okay with Mr. White bringing it?
Do you do structural stuff?
Yes, sir, we do these pre-engineer metal buildings all the time, the foundations.
You done any, like, fire hall bays or anything like that, like, anything that would, like, would compare to what we're trying to do here?
We have fixed a fire hall bay, we have not done a brand-new building, uh.
Okay.
If you're familiar with Red Bull and Springs.
Mm-hmm.
We worked on it.
Okay.
Um, they had some problems with, uh, the floor cracking, and they thought it was gonna fall, fall in, but, uh, it was mostly cosmetic, but.
They, they four-inch pad.
We've done, uh.
More work now, now.
Right.
We've done a hundred and thirty thousand square foot, um, factory building, it's a pre-engineer metal building.
Okay.
They do, uh, big aluminum, um. Rolls, like, where they stamp it in, like, say Nissan plant, um, they brought those to the floors, we actually did, did that building.
Okay.
I mean, we did these buildings all the time, most of your factories are these type buildings.
I just wanna make, I know, there was an issue when we talked about it a couple, a couple of years ago, about the roof, the way the roof is. The way the insulation is, it's. What?
The insulation was sagging.
Yeah, but there was something about having to continue that on with the new, the new building, and, you know, making sure that it matches. And I know that sounds dumb, but like, you don't want two different colors, you want the roofs to fix and whatever, but.
Now, your outside probably will not match.
Okay.
You get close, because.
Well, it's.
As long as it's been there.
Right, I understand.
Buildings are.
But.
You get some sun tint.
But, I mean, like, I don't want. Basically, like, just put two building, you know, like, they, we were gonna extend it out and not necessarily put two buildings next to each other, I guess, and I don't know.
One continuous building, that's what we talked about.
Yeah.
Instead of two separate.
Right.
It, I believe the building, from looking at it, has probably been designed that way.
Okay.
To be able to be added on to.
Okay.
I believe the metal will come off, the far end of the building can be used on the far end of any new addition.
Okay.
They'll leave you the metal on the front, uh, cut the new bay doors, and it's gonna take a pretty good pad, because the, the ladder is forty-eight thousand pounds empty.
I saw it over, I, I didn't think the concrete was in there.
How, how much is that ladder weight empty?
Forty-eight thousand pounds.
What are we talking about? Maybe seven inch?
Yeah, it's lower.
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna be, you're probably gonna be, you're probably looking at eight inches, because when they have it full, we're looking at eighty, I mean, it's probably over that, but. Eighty thousand pounds is usually what shoot for, that's, um, and it could be heavier, uh, depending on what kinda truck that's got in it.
RFQ, it's RFQ.
Yeah, I discovered.
Cause we're gonna do it regardless, we wanna go after that grant, we wanna do as we can, but it's a safety issue we're responsible for.
Right.
I think Mr. Moore is saying.
That's what I thought, this is.
So, so you, you can either do an RF.
Mr. Moore has a, oh, let's.
So you can either go ahead and do an RFQ to, to have solicit, uh. Proposals from engineers to do the survey, or to do the work, or you can have Mr. White just prepare a contract to submit to you at the. January meeting to do the, uh, engineering work for it.
I, I'd prefer we just do, I mean, I'd rather just do an RFQ, that way we, you know. Yeah, we keep it fair.
Well, and that was the whole.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yep.
Nothing against you, it's just.
I'm fine.
Lot of, lot of other stuff.
We can also just, I mean, if you're on prices, we can get prices up all the time.
All right.
When we work.
Well, we're gonna send it out, so.
That's what I'm saying, we, we will be doing what we think it'll cost.
Well, and that is, I don't, I mean, it sounds like we're in agreement that the engineering will be necessary for this project, so.
Right, so.
So, just, just, so we're all on the same page, the RFQ, request for qualifications, we have to send that first for the engineer. That'll take a couple of weeks, at least, to get all that back in, then, once we get an engineer on board, we send, he does the design, or she did the design work, and. Basically, what we're looking for, then we'd send that out to a construct, to RFP. For, for request for professional.
Proposal.
For proposal, excuse me, and then we get back the bids. For that specific design, and that's when we take that bid and. Whoever the art, the engineer will help us with that.
Right, so it'll be April.
So it'll be a few weeks out, but that's okay.
I mean, it's, it'll be there, yeah, so we'll start on it now, and then if it comes down, we get a grant, great, if not, we're, I mean, we're, we're just running, when we're running a safety, it's kind of a more rush, you know what I mean?
So, can I hear a motion that we send an RFQ out for this?
If you're gonna try to go for that CDBG grant, you will not find out about it till probably September, October of twenty twenty, so, ju- just throwing it out there.
Yeah.
You gotta wait about ten months.
Right.
Time you submit that.
When is, when is, but budget comes up?
July.
July, so that gives us a, accounting to go, go ahead and, if we have to budget for it, that way we don't have to amend the budget.
Right.
We can budget out straightforward, and, so, yeah, I guess, mo, you know.
Uh, I make a motion that we send out an RFQ for the new fire hall base.
For an engineer, okay, all right, okay, I have a motion to send out RFQ for an engineer to design the fire hall bay. Second, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, be opposed, so we'll be sending out an RFQ for the engineer. Okay, um. Then the next item is, uh, commercial trash options, uh, we had to defer this to the facade committee to talk about, Mr. Reese was supposed to talk about that tonight, but. He's, I think, in play practice, first rehearsal, uh, it did go before the facade committee, and they felt like putting it in the. Parking lot of the museum was probably not a good idea for, for several reasons, and it. Basically just felt whatever the commercial person or company wanted to do would be fine, but not in that lot. And perhaps that the city might not need to get into the process of providing land for commercial property.
Uh, I did not get that same report.
Okay, well, tell me what you got.
I got a report that you kinda shut the discussion down, so.
Wait a minute, wait, wait, who, who told you that?
That's what came from the report, um, so, and, and, all this, all being, all this being said. That's, that, we, we haven't decided, we, we wanted the city to figure out how to do this. And if we're gonna have the facade say, well, they don't feel the city can be involved, they're involved, the, the facade is involved with the facade, is that right?
That's what you asked for last time.
So, we need to find a commercial trash option as a city, we need to figure that, cause we have, like you reported earlier, we have all kinds of businesses moving in here, we got all kinds. we have all kinds of businesses moving in here, we got all kinds of commercial things and they're paying the same.
Would you like to make a motion?
I, I would, well, I mean, honestly, I think that we need to push this next one so we can hear what, uh, Bill had to say on it, because I know Bill was our representative as a council, and I, I think it's fair to hear from him on it, so.
So we'll, we'll table it to next.
Okay.
Okay, I have, here the motion to table, let's to next meeting.
Motion table is to next meeting.
Seven.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so we'll table that to the next meeting. Okay. All righty, um, new business, chief, okay.
Just gonna take a quick second to add, so we promoted Sergeant Smith last week to the assistant chief, and so that leaded to when sergeant position opened. So we opened it up, we did the same thing we did last time, anybody who was interested could sign up for it, uh, they turned in their resumes, which y'all have already seen obviously. And I interviewed each one of them, and so my recommendation is gonna be Patrolman Jason Maynard, I think he'll do a good job, and that's gonna be my recommendation. If y'all have any questions for me, please feel free.
Motion Patrolman Maynard?
Patrolman Maynard to Sergeant.
Yep, second.
Okay, we have a motion second to, to promote ma, Sergeant, Patrolman Major, Maynard to Sergeant.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, any discussion on that?
I'd just like to say in reading that he, he had great qualifications, great education, great experience, so, um, yeah.
He's a good one, very good one.
But I think, I agree with you, but they all had, you know.
They did all have qualifications.
I'll, I'll say this, it was, it was a hard, it, it's a hard decision, we've, we've got some, I set a really good off sheet right now, guys, and I think the town and the council should be happy on what we've got in this department right now, so.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, all in favor of, of promoting Patrolman Maynard to Sergeant Maynard? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, all opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Uh, Ms. Teresa, you're on, please, new business.
Yes, ma'am, um, I just wanted to report that our part-time employee is, is working out very well, I've got some thoughts here because I've got some things to say about. Uh, and he's working out, he's been working with me daily, he's gone through his sixty-day evaluation a couple of weeks ago and that went well, and he's shown me to be dependable and trustworthy and punctual, and he's eager to learn, he kicks up on things easily, and he's already doing a lot of the daily duties and, and he looks at this job to be long-term. And as it is now, you know, we lost an employee, Rusty and I, just the two of us are running three shelves and have been for over three months now. So, just being said, I recommended him and asked him for your approval to move him to full-time.
Okay, do I have a motion to affect?
We'll make a motion, we promote him full-time.
Okay, we have a motion second to promote Josh.
Josh Duke.
Full-time, any discussion?
Yes, uh, we have in the budget, the salary already in the budget.
We lost an employee, so.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's just gonna be picking right back up, okay. That's my one question.
Any further, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of, of making Josh do full-time? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? There we go, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All righty, um, Dr. Duke, we have the first reading of, uh.
You skipped the T-DAC contract.
Oh, sorry, yes, we gotta get the walking track contract, okay. Mr. Moore, do you want to speak to that, and we have a resolution also, right?
We do, I did see it in the packet, but I missed it.
I did not put it in the packet, the contract itself was rather large and I already killed enough trees with the rest of the stuff, so I didn't include it. I did email it to you, I don't know if you guys saw it.
So I have, I have reviewed the contract and we have a resolution to approve that contract to move forward on the walking track.
Okay, so I hear a motion to approve the resolution to move forward, to do the resolution for, okay.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Uh, any discussion on that? Okay, the, the motion is to remove, approve a resolution to move forward with the walking track contract.
And it, to approve the contract.
To approve the contract, the T-DAC.
Yes.
Yes. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? So we will, that, that resolution passes to move forward with the contract, and now the contract.
No, it, it also included approval of the contracts and authorizes you to sign it.
Great, all right, we're done, can we can move forward with the walking track, fantastic, thank you. Okay, now the first reading of ordinance P two oh one nine one 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 three dash one, sign ordinance, Dr. Duke, you wanna address this?
There's a tree there, so.
Let me spread this out.
Okay.
All right, um.
What is that board?
About there. There we go. Thought you'd be teaching you. Um, first of all, um, this is, um, and I apologize for being such a long ordinance, it, it, it's pretty voluminous, uh, but basically, the reason why it's as long as it is is because it's having to cover some things that, um, back before, uh, what, two, three to four years ago, it wasn't even a, a problem, now we have to kind of, uh, worry some about the First and Fourteenth Amendment, and, uh, that comes into play when we look at the signs now. So, um, the sign, the, um, I, I don't know, how much you want me to go into this, I can't, I, it would take a long time, I, you want me, you want me just to answer questions?
Has everybody got a chance to re-post it to you?
Yeah.
Maybe we just asked.
Did you discuss the differences between the current one and the new one?
Well, I'm not so sure, we do have a legal current. To be honest with you, uh, we, we, we have one that's in place, but it has errors all the way through, it has a lot of duplications of things, a lot of contradictions. Uh, some of the ordinances that, uh, were passed to amend the one that we had were not done by due process, they didn't get signed, et cetera, et cetera, so they, so they didn't really work, so, uh, um, but what's in this one kind of takes a little bit out of every one of the hidden parts and corrects a lot of the contradictions and kind of goes back to the, the original, we had, as far as the sizes goes, it kind of goes back to the original before, uh, the one that was in the nineteen, uh, ninety-five and ninety-six original set of zoning codes, if that, if that helps any.
How does it compare to other towns?
It, it, as far as, well, it, it's kind of ahead of some of the other towns as far, as far as the, the, uh, the parts of it go, yes.
Uh, um, Dave Rowland of Rowland Advertising looked at it and he commended the Roger and the town for being proactive. He said that most towns have not done it and they're in a mess, so.
I think he's been doing that a long time.
Yeah, and in fact, he says he's getting a lot of work from other towns where they did not be proactive and they're having, redoing a lot of stuff.
It'll be working out with eight months?
Yeah, about eight months.
We want to compliment and thank you, that's really hard work.
It, it, to make it work, uh, and you, you'll, you'll see some differences in this that, 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 that we're probably not gonna be used to. Things like, um, you, you won't see a particular type of sign, like a real estate sign or a, or a candidate sign or so on and so forth. Uh, basically, it, it, the, you can't, nowadays you cannot look at a sign and read it and do, and regulate it according to what's on the sign. There's only a few things that you can do, you can, you can look at the size of the sign and where the sign's placed, and just, and how long maybe, or time, place, the, the size of the sign, that's about all you can regulate now. So, uh, back in the old days and, and the originals, we, you know, we'd say, uh, a, you know, a sign, a real estate sign is, can be this size, or a sign for a church can be this size, or a sign for, for on-premises sign versus off-premises sign, you can make a difference now, you can't make a difference between those two. So everything basically in this is regulated just by size and in what zone it's put in. And so, um, the, it, there's a three hundred square foot sign face limit to, 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 to the signs. And, and, and this particular one, instead of going with each particular sign saying this sign can have this much and this sign can have it much, we talked about the zones, and each zone has a collective sign face amount that it can be. And none of it can be over three hundred square feet, that's the limit for any, any zoning. And then you can use that three hundred square feet, uh, with different types of signs that's allowed in it. So you can use maybe a hundred square feet for this sign and two hundred square feet for this sign, if it's a three hundred square feet limit for that particular zone. It gets complicated, I know it does, and, uh.
Can you give me like a, an example of something that would be like that?
Okay, um, well, um, for, for instance, if you look on, on the, um, page, um, this one over here, just to get the page for you, um.
And I think you have kind of read along and so has M-TAS, it, it, the legal department has been doing this, is what I understand.
I have, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's been approved by him and also, uh, M-TAS, we, we run things by M-TAS as well. Okay, so if you go to page seventeen and look up at the top, you'll see that it has standard collective sign face area allowed in every particular zone. And so you, so you can see there, so we'll take, for instance, R-one, okay? So R-one, in, in R-one zone, you can have nine square feet sign face, any, anywhere in R-one, okay? And you can use that nine square feet any way you want to use it, you can do two, uh, 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 two signs equally or whatever, as long as it doesn't go over nine square feet, as far as the, the sign goes.
Like, what would a sign in R-one be? School?
Well, no, R-one is residential, so.
Like what would, like what kind of sign would somebody put in R-one, and, and I'm just, I'm just asking just, just because I, I just don't know.
Well, for instance, a, a sign, I, I say a lot of signs, I'm not, again, we're not, we're supposed to read these signs and say what.
Right.
A lot of people have nice religious signs on, you know, like, uh.
Like for the church?
Advertisement sign, if they have a little small, uh, home based business or whatever, a little sign of that sort.
Just like a little yard sign.
A little yard sign.
Now, would that, would that be the same for, um, like during election season if they wanted four different people's signs in their yards, how would that work out?
Okay, now the election season is a little different, this is where the federal, where the federal rules and regulations, the state hasn't caught up with the federal rules and regulations yet. So there's a little bit of division as to what can be done. It, technically, we're not supposed to even talk about election signs in, in this. And if you'll notice, uh, that I didn't necessarily talk about them, but I did say that in, in this particular case, any, when it came to election signs, we will follow whatever the state says to follow, as far as that goes. So the state has different rules, they, they, they just haven't caught up with the, with, with the federal yet, am I?
I, I agree.
Yeah, they just haven't caught up. And so, so, um, it will eventually, I think it will eventually come to that, but until such time, I think we're okay with, at least with legal, we.
The legislature a couple of years ago passed a specific statute regarding political signs that regardless of what the town did would, um, would control. And so, um, the, this ordinance just defers to that state statute. What we're kind of talking around is the fact that I think we both agree that the state statute may very well be unconstitutional, but that's, that's a statutory issue, not a, not a town issue.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're gonna get hung on that, I mean, because, because we're following at least one statute anyway, that, that we have, that, that.
Now, in our discussion that you and I had, is my understanding that, um, this is not retroactive, so to speak, to existing signs or permanent signs, in other words, right?
Right, any, any sign that was legally erected before this zoning ordinance will be passed, uh, if it's illegally erected, it's, it's a legal sign to start out with, uh, that comes under the Nonconformity Act and it, it can, it, we, we can't change that, 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 that. Now, I say we can't change it if it becomes a public hazard or a, uh, of something of that nature, safety hazard or so on and so forth, that, that, then it can, you know, we can, that comes under a different, different ordinance. But, but, uh, as far as this ordinance goes, it, it doesn't come under this, this, this is not retroactive, anything. And, and you'll notice too, in one section there, um, I, I didn't go into all the Nonconformity Act because that's a pretty long one. I just said that we will abide by non, the Nonconformity Act, the State Tennessee Nonconformity Act, when it comes to the signs. So we can always refer back to the state statute for that. Otherwise, it'd be another four pages. So I figured it would be just easy enough to say, okay, we're gonna follow that. Plus, in the Nonconformity Act, it talks about on-premises versus off-premises signs, and again, that's where the federal people said, there's a federal opinion, uh, well, not federal, but I guess, uh, the, uh.
The Supreme Court decision?
Supreme Court, yeah, Supreme Court says you can't do that. So in order, so to keep this clean and say, and not put that in here, I just said that we will go along with the state statute, although the state statute does say something about non, uh, on-premises versus off-premises signs. That makes sense? That, it, it, hopefully this will be clean as far as, uh, and I will say this, 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 if you'll go to Nashville's and look at them, and you go Franklin's and look at them, you go to them, they, they don't abide by that, so this, this is probably fresh off the press.
Can I ask in your opinion, do you feel that this sign is going to, ordinance is going to, uh, help businesses get more advertising, um, out there? Signage is very, very important businesses, is this going to help them or hinder them?
Well, I, I'll say this, that we have two businesses right now, that one is waiting to expand, waiting till this gets passed, comes out, because of the sign, what we have now, what, whatever it is that we have now, whether it's legal or not, they can't do what they want to do with it, so they're waiting for this to be passed so they, they can expand.
So they can, so it'll help that one business?
Well, there, there's actually two businesses.
Two businesses, okay.
That's kind of waiting on you. So, you know, they, and they've been waiting for what, two, three months now, three months, almost three months now. And I've, I've been trying to get this together, but it's just, it, it's not easy really, trust me, it's not easy. But we, but, um, so, uh, but I, I think, and, and we do have, you know, not, not every, you know, these, these are great as far as regulations goes, but not everything, not all sizes fits one. So we do have a, a method in here that, I call it the outsized, I, I just came up with that name, outsized, uh, uh, outsized, sized, uh, structures and outsized lots. So that means even though we got a, um, a limit on some of the signs, some of these places that have five and six acres out here and they need a sign, and it would fit on there and it wouldn't be, you know, it would, they need a little bit larger. So if you'll, if you'll look on the end there, we have something that, that will let, let some of these larger, larger places have larger amounts of signs than, than what your smaller businesses would, or that's on a smaller location.
I just want to commend, commend you on your work, because he's, I, I apparently spent hours and hours and hours and, and it's brought it by legal from every end possible, um.
It, um, then, and you know, and, you know, this, even though I've done it, I think, I think it's gonna work great for the city. Uh, you know, I've, I've taken into consideration all places I've gone and I've looked at signs all over the city and places where signs would be and so on and so forth. Although I think it will work real well for the city, uh, if we can pass this, this will help get these two businesses kind of going. And then if we, if later on, you know, sometimes you don't know how shoes gonna wear until you put it on and you walk in for a while. So, you know, after months, if, if we find out that there's something in this that just doesn't fit with our city or whatever we want, we can always amend it. You know, make an, an amendment and pass an ordinance to amend this.
Now, if something doesn't fa, fall within the sign ordinance, what, do they, can they appeal the, appeal the variance or whatever?
Yes, we have, we have an appeal, an appellate process in there too, that it can be submitted to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And, and that, and there's a whole section there that talks about how, what can, you know, the. And, and that, and there's a whole section in there that talks about how, what can, you know, the, the regulations and that, that's, uh, for, for that.
My only last question, I apologize, um, is, does this, um, if I remember correctly from our meeting, this does not apply to city government or county government to, to follow these regulations?
Actually, no, I thi- I think the ci- I think the city would probably, the, the ci- most, most of your city signs are stop signs and traffic signs and things of that nature, and I, I think the city, now, I may be wrong on this, but I think the city, uh, would probably use this as a guide, but I don't think they have to go by the, 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 the state, federal, or, or city, as long as it's, it's on the city property and not on private property.
So, if we wanted to add it so that the city had to, um, the city had to do this as well, just the same as the citizens, is that, is that an easy amendment to put in here?
Well...
Not really.
Not really.
And the reason is, the reason is, because the, by law, the city and, and even the county, um, has a process under state law, not just for the sign ordinance, but for zoning in general, where it still has to come to the planning commission, and it still has to be recommended, but ultimately, this board or the county commission could, could override a zoning decision and implement what they want to do, um, by state law, if, if it comes to that. So, so putting that kind of language in there, you know, wouldn't be effective at the end of the day. Now, again, I, I think almost all the time, the city wants to comply, and typically, most of the signs, governmental signs are, are not, are exempt from the regulations. Yeah, but when you go to put up a, you know, welcome to town sign, or some other type of sign, you typically do try to comply with the regulations, and I think that's recommended.
I've got two concerns on it, and, and, um, not, and not to take away, like, I, I absolutely appreciate everything you did, and I, I want to move forward on this, because this is something that we need, but I just, I do, I do want to pick it apart a little bit. Um, two things is, we get someone who wants to put something like, just really tacky in for the city, or for the county, or something like that, that's not gonna match up with our feel and everything we're going. It, do we, we don't necessarily have a safeguard in there to, to do it, even though you say they, they probably will, they're not forced to the way citizens are.
Right.
Okay, so it's more of an assumption.
And you're, again, you're talking about just the, the city or county or the state, yeah?
Um, and so, like, you know, if, if they have some sort of sign project that they want to put up, and it ends up, you know, looking terrible, you know, let's just say the county wants to do something, and they're putting it up, and it doesn't match what we're trying to do in the city, we don't really have a recourse to be like, well, we don't want that.
Yeah, what, what you can do is say, the planning commission's not gonna approve it, we, we are letting you know it's in violation of our zoning, and it can go back to the county commission, they can say, well, we're gonna, we're gonna do it anyway, because they are of the same level of authority as, as the town, and the state, same thing. So, uh, I'm, back to your original question, I mean, we can put that language in the ordinance, but again, at the end of the day, it's not gonna change anything, yeah?
Okay, okay.
And, and I've, I've read, well, I mean, his zoning ordinance is with signage, and it's really not in any of those. It, you know, they steer clear of that, but as a matter of fact, they just pretty well say, you know, the city and the county and federal is exempt from, from these. So, but I think, I think, I think there would be some recourse, I mean, it's not like they can just kind of do it, and you have no recourse at all. The, the city, under the city can, the ci- the planning commission, you know, anything, anything that's built here in the city, even if the city does it legally, is supposed to come before the planning.
They, they review it, yes, and if they deny it, then again, there's a mechanism that it can go back to the governing body, and they can agree with it, or they can override it.
Right, so, so it'll have to, you know, even, even, we're still in that fire hall, that, that, that would have to come before the planning commission. That, not saying that they would do anything about it, but it still has to come before, legally has to come before the planning. Anything that's built in the city, be it city or whatever, has to come before the planning commission beforehand, legally, right in my right?
It's just basically, we put some writing there, it's getting pretty big. Yeah, I got you, I got you, okay.
Define, you have to define tacky.
Yeah, divide, well...
Try that.
Okay.
I, I would be more than happy to do a PowerPoint, if we have more time, if some of you guys want to get together or whatever. Anytime you have questions with this, feel free to come and ask me a question, you know, I, I don't want to bore you with a lot of the details. I'll be more than happy to try, or, or if you would like me to, before the, if, if you're passing on this reading, before the next reading, in the public hearing, I'd be more than happy to do a PowerPoint presentation, and kind of, for, where we can really get into it and, and, and hit the highlights, or however it works best for you guys.
My question, when I was reading this, when we first got here, was, um, explain UL, I mean, I've kind of found an explanation in here, but what process is that, to, to be able to get that approval?
Well, u- usually, anything that has, that's electrical, has the UL, and, and it'll have a number on it, and it'll either be certified UL or not certified UL. And so, if it's certified UL, you're okay, if it's not certified UL, it's, it's, it'll be attached to the, whatever they have, the way I see it.
Like the tag you get on your mattress?
I didn't know if this had to be approved, but I see it will already have been approved.
Right, it'll already be approved. Now, as far as, and, and now, there are some, as far as the light, light limits are concerned on there, there's some light limits, and those light limits are just light limits from anything, any, any sign. And, uh, there are some things that has to be, the ma- the manufacturer of the sign will have to tell us what those light, make sure it fits those light limits, so when you have a light, uh, you know, that, we don't blow somebody else's, some residence, you know, keep them waking up because of light or whatever.
Is that pretty standard?
Very standard, you'll notice, I took those from two well-national standards that are used, the two, two methods that I've got there. These are from standards, and I, I actually put the source down where I got them, where the standards come from.
Well, I, I motion, if there's no more discussion, I motion that we approve this ordinance, I, I think this is needed. Um, I think it's, I think it's a lot more fair across the board, it gives a little bit more oversight in the planning commission to, and we got a couple more sets eyes on things now, um, and I, you know, I just, uh, I get my concern earlier, um, but I think, I mean, I don't really think there's much we can do on it, so...
I'll second.
Okay, motion is being made, a second to, to pass on first reading, this ordinance, any further discussion? Not all in favor? Any opposed, so it passes? Aye, aye, okay. The next item is, we had talked about the historic Cordell Bridge, the weight limit. Mr. Ema, I shared with you earlier, we have talked with T-Dot, did you have other concerns?
Yeah, well, just to update the council and the city on kind of what's going on is, so we got, um, got this bridge that took like ten years to get fixed, and, um, we were discussing in the planning commission, um, just some big trucks coming over it, and full of, you know, just really high weight, and even though there's an approved weight limit on that bridge set by, um, T-Dot, or, um, we own that bridge, that's the city's bridge, that's our bridge, that's our responsibility, so if that bridge goes out, we're done, it's done, and we can see what the economic impact will be on that. So, um, basically, um, uh, basically, the lim- putting a limit, like a weight limit on there, so that, you know, we're not looking at tractor trailers or concrete trucks coming across, um, but it come, they, um, but just, you know, make regular traffic, you know, I don't think it would affect anything, like you take like DT McCalls, box trucks, things like that, that's gonna be, but I think we were talking about if it's more than two axles or something like that.
I don't know if we can regulate those, since it's not our bridge, though.
From what I was told, the planning commission, it's, it's, does the state turn it over, or is that not true?
Well, T-Dot has, we've been back and forth in conversations, it did back when they, when they did the first repair, and then it didn't kind of last, and they came back and had money for the second, I think after that, and then the last go-around, they did give it to the city, but now there's some questions, because obviously, the city cannot, we don't have the money to make repairs on that bridge, so we've been in conversation again with T-Dot about, could they kind of rethink that? But, but their feeling, and they put it in writing, is that we can put signs on that bridge to protect it, that's what, and we've gotten that in writing from T-Dot, so...
But only in their city limits?
We'd have to do it on the other side for South Carthage.
Yeah, technically, we'd have to do it over there too, so...
There is, uh, already on our side, if you look, when you go across the bridge, there are the, no truck, you know, the truck with the line through it, and there's a forty-ton weight limit, uh...
But who, who regulates that, who monitors that?
Well, if, if we put it on, it would be us.
It's pretty standard, uh, you gonna stop a truck?
It's gonna be hard for us to be regulating forty tons.
You won't be saying, I work some scales.
We don't have the equipment to do that.
Right.
Well, what, what the planning commission actually came up with, it was, they would like to, to put signs that says, "Single axle vehicles only", which will keep those big, big things, but now, the, the police chief said that their vehicles have...
Well, let me say this, I don't know how many of y'all know much about vehicles, but if you, if you put a single vehicle, ax- single axle on a trailer, that's a very small trailer, so you have some of these like lawnmower companies and all that kind of stuff, you know, that have, uh, businesses, you know, anything essentially, you'd be campers, RV campers, you know, anything, you'd be limited in a lot of stuff. I don't know what the good answer is, but that's...
We went through all that, and we, we, Roger probably would be better explaining that tonight.
We, we, what our thoughts were, is that if that was the only egress we had to the city for, for deliveries and so on and so forth, then that would be, that would be really something, but, but we have the bypass, which they can come around, you know, anything that's ground that, so limit the bridge to the single axle, which would have to be, but I don't think you can get much over twenty tons on a single axle with...
I don't think we're close to, are you talking about, are you talking about like a single axle?
I mean, I mean, I'm sorry.
Like a single axle, like a, like a trailer?
Not, not, not saying, I don't think we're using the right word with single axle, are we?
Well, the, the, for, for the...
Because a single axle, I'm, I'm...
Single axles, tech...
Yeah, a single axle, like a little utility trailer, I mean, you buy a TSC for six hundred dollars.
We're talking, we were talking, I'm trying to think of what the, we, we found out what the word was for, uh, but, like, you're talking about like furniture moving trucks, like U-Hauls, that, that wouldn't be, wouldn't fall under it.
That would be okay.
That would be okay.
Yeah.
We're talking about things that would be like semis, or you're talking about...
I understand you.
Trucks are heavy enough where they got two axles in the back, so they got dual, they got dual wheels going on, um...
And I think you would probably have to figure out and pass some kind of city ordinance on that, so we could enforce that in city court, is something I could think of.
We'd like that bridge to last more than ten years, we, we liked it to ma- last at least fifty more years, um, and, and that, I just want to, you know, just something to think about, I think the planning commission was gonna come up with something officially, and I wanted, I wa- I was just wanting to communicate that that will be coming down the line, um, just to...
I'd be more than happy to talk to y'all with it.
That'd be great, absolutely.
We'll figure out something that'll work out, good for everybody and the city and the businesses and all that.
Well, the bridge isn't wide enough to get, you know, if you're on there with a big truck.
There was a, you know how some of these, uh, companies that move these, uh, like, uh, trailers and stuff like that, like house trailers and all that stuff? There was one that broke down on Main Street, and I was talking to him, and they were fixing the tire, and I said, "Where are you going with this?" He said, "I would go down here and turn on your bridge", I said, "Which bridge?", he said, "This one", I said, "How you gonna get on it?"
And off, or off.
He said, "Well, I don't know, but when you make that left, turn off of it", he said, "That's sharp", I said, "Yeah", I said, "You need to keep going straight and then go across the new bridge, where's that at?", I had to tell him, but, I mean, some people don't understand, they get on Google Maps, it's, Google Maps takes you straight through town, guys, it doesn't take you down the bypass.
And that's the big, that's the big point of it, that's why we spent all the money on the bypass, was to be able to have that happen without damaging our bridge. And that's, that's a historical bridge, it's a, you know, that's a centerpiece of our town, well, you know, let's, let's protect it.
Well, y'all need to talk with, uh, South Carthage too, because they're technically the other side.
It'd have to be a joint thing, so...
From what, from what I was told, the information, the planning commission was, 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 it was the city's bridge, so I'm just going based on...
Right.
I'm just going based on what I was told on that.
I'd say like, I guess it'd be the same on the old bridge, but with the new bridge.
Yeah.
Going to the Carthage city limits, going away is Carthage city limits, coming in was South Carthage, is that right? Or is it...
On the new bridge?
That's on the state highway.
That's on the state, yeah.
Is it not, so how does it work for the old bridge?
On the new bridge, it's, uh, you actually, it's opposite, actually, the other thing.
Okay.
Like, when you're, when we go into South Carthage on our side, it says, "Entering South Carthage",
That's right.
Right there, and then when you're coming back from South Carthage into Carthage, it says, "Entering Carthage", so this one actually doesn't have those signs, I don't think.
Does that come into play at all, that way?
Usually, half, half of the bridge, that side, the South Carthage handles it, on our side, we handle it.
So, I guess we were paying for part of the, we were paying for one half of the street lights and...
You know, like, if there's a car broke down on that side of the bridge, South Carthage handles it, if it breaks in on our side, we handle it.
I think we need to find out who officially owns the bridge, because...
The boundary, see, the boundary is middle of the river, I believe, isn't it?
City, right.
I don't think so, I think it's at the river.
Is it at the river?
I think so.
Yeah, so, I think...
As you say, I have an email from T-Dot saying it is ours, but, but then they have been thinking about it some more since that came to us, because I...
It's a nice little gray area.
I shared with them, I, I shared with them, it would be very hard for us to pay for you.
Yeah, regardless if it's R or T-Dot, I think we need to find some protections for it, because...
The other thing that was discussed in the planning commission is not only to say no trucks, but to direct them to, to the bridge, like you're saying, they may not know where it is, so just put a directional sign to the veteran's bridge.
Or, commercial, commercial...
Commercial traffic.
Commercial traffic, I'm sorry, commercial traffic, and have an arrow pointing that way or something.
And they said they would be fine with those signs too, when we talked to them.
Same thing on the bypass, maybe, instead of, you know, whether turning left on up, I figure you could have one, "Commercial traffic in the neighborhood", something like that.
Okay, all right, that's, uh, the end of this, do we want to go into executive session?
I, I've got one more quick thing to point out that I noticed, it's off-subject, it's clerical error, but I think our council meeting is on the second.
Which is gonna lie?
Next month, uh, instead of the ninth, and I think we were all basing it on the ninth.
It's on a Wednesday.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so I think we based that last meeting on...
Oh, yeah, we did.
I wondered when you said the ninth, I was like, that is amazing, or whoever said that.
Yeah, I did that, my bad.
No, it's, have, that's why we're, we're looking at it, so I just, do we wanna, I mean, it's the holidays, it's busier.
I won't be able to do anything, but, um, do we want to just move forward as planned, regard, you know?
I'm sorry, referring to what again?
To our special call.
To our special call meeting. I would like to keep it, because Jacqueline, I don't think you've really got anything, and...
I mean, I'll finally keep, I just want to point that out.
Yeah, I understand, I just, I won't be able to, I won't be able to make anything, so...
If y'all are fine with keeping it, I just want to point out that we wouldn't be able to...
I didn't think about that until just now, yeah.
Do it till the February meeting, any, anything, so...
It'll be okay.
Okay.
Is that all right with y'all?
Whatever y'all decide, it's fine.
I'm fine with that. And then I think it'd also be appropriate, I guess, to publicly say, um, and I think we all would probably agree, is that, you know, we got, anyone in the city wants to talk to us, we got open door, come talk to us, like Jennifer was recommending, uh, just be available to y'all, instead of approaching you, um, if y'all want to approach us about anything, approach us, um...
I'd like to say we appreciate the job that you've done.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, thank you.
I would do it. Thank you. Um, if we don't hire anybody, what happens? Like, if we don't find somebody, what happens in that absence while we're waiting?
Nothing.
I mean, who's...
She does everything.
Okay. Just to be able to cut checks and stuff like that?
Yes, Julie cuts checks, yeah. That will still get done, but the other stuff, won't.
Gotcha, okay.
And there's a lot of other stuff.
Yeah, I know.
Hey, do we still want to go into executive session?
Yeah.
Okay, then, uh, thank you, everyone, we'll ask you to leave, and thank you for being here.